I'd like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance if you'd please join us.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd please remain standing, I'd like to invite Eric Faust, pastor at First Triumphant Baptist, excuse me. Pastor at Triumphant Baptist Church here in Harrison to provide tonight's invocation.
Honored to be here tonight. Let's pray. Father, thank you for a beautiful day. We thank you for the promise of this day and all the blessings that you've given to us. We thank you for this great city in which we're privileged to live and to serve. And Father, we thank you tonight, Lord, for this council, for the hours of work and labor and toil, Lord, heart and passion that you put into their jobs. Father, we thank you for them, and I pray you bless them. Bless their homes, bless their families. Father, I pray God again that you would just watch over this meeting tonight. I pray you'd give us great wisdom, great discretion, and may Lord everything. Lord, bring you glory again. Thank you for this great city in which we live. Amen.
Thank you, Eric. Start the meeting. Will you please take the roll call?
Abrams.
Here.
Manager.
Here.
Grubbs.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Dole.
Here.
Maynes.
Here.
Galindo.
Here.
First item this evening is approval of the council meeting minutes for April 3rd, 2018.
So move.
Second.
Do we have any additions, corrections that need to be made?
No.
Hearing done. Will you please take the roll?
Maynes.
Yay.
Galindo.
Yay.
Abrams.
Yay.
Manager.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Lewis.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
We have a few invited guests this evening. The first is Andy Coebs with FCN Bank, and I'd like to have him come forward, and I'd like Kim Sovran, who is Recreation Commission Coordinator, to join him.
Well, we're going to sponsor, I think this is our third year, isn't it? Our third year of sponsoring the concert series and fireworks, I believe, or the, or the dedication commission, and it's been a pleasure to do that in the past. We're looking forward to do that, doing that again, and I have this, I guess this cake chat to show the model of the contribution we're once again making towards the Harrison Recreation. Come on, Ken.
Can you guys come on the stick, please?
You bet.
Just stand up front.
Yeah.
Okay. It's one of you know good.
No, it's all good. You want us to? We're good.
Oh, wait, wait, you want us to do that?
Oh, yes, yes. Got to get the official, right?
I'd like to.
And if I could just thank FCN Bank for their support of the Harrison Recreation Commission. I appreciate your generosity, and these funds will go towards a successful summer concert series and firework display. So, thank you.
You bet.
So FCN's been, just so we thankfully, the third year they've been a sponsor, and they've been a great corporate partner for the city. We have many other great corporate partners that occasionally come in and make donations for different causes, and I'd like just to thank every one of our corporate partners that we have throughout the city. Next on the agenda, we have an addition. I'd like to invite Dale Stalf forward. He's a candidate for judge in the upcoming election.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and citizens of Harrison. Just wanted to take a few minutes to introduce myself. I am Dale Stalf, running for judge of the Hamilton County Court of Appeals in November. I'll be on the ballot in May, unopposed in the Republican primary, but I'm the Republican Party endorsed candidate for the Court of Appeals. Just wanted to tell you a little bit about my background. Born and raised in Cincinnati, grew up in Delhi, now live in what I refer to as Greater Cleves. Not in Cleves proper, but in Miami Township. I've got a brother-in-law and a sister-in-law that actually live in Harrison as well. And I do, I'm hoping I can be announced as the favorite son of Harrison in the election in November, because my grandfather actually lived in Harrison. He was born in West Harrison, but I think moved here when he was age six and lived here. His last name, as I always knew him, was R O E L L, but I understand in Harrison, back when he lived here, and now today, they pronounce it Rel. So, that's my background. My grandfather, Stalf, was the Secretary Treasurer of the International Brewery Workers Union, which back in the day was actually headquartered in Cincinnati, which a lot of people don't know their headquarters were on Vine Street, just on the way up to Clifton. So, my background, again, grew up in Delhi, went to St. X High School. I know we've got a number of elder grads on council. My son went to Elder, so that should count for something, I hope. Went to Xavier University, majored in business, and also was in the ROTC program. And when I graduated from Xavier, I was commissioned as second lieutenant in the Army, was assigned to Fort Campbell, Kentucky, was a forward support platoon leader in the 101st Airborne Division for a couple of years. Then I got selected to attend law school under the Army's funded legal education program, went to UC, graduated there in 1983, and then got accepted into the Army JAG Corps. Served about three and a half years over in Germany, when there were two Germanes, so this was back in the mid-eighties. Actually, went through Checkpoint Charlie to get to see how the other half of Germany lived, and I got to tell you, it wasn't nearly as nice and as pleasant as West Germans lived. And I remember distinctly thinking, when President Reagan gave the speech, "Mr. Gorbachev, tear down this wall," thinking very clearly, "I'll never see that happen in my lifetime," just because of so how impressive, and that's in a bad way impressive, the wall was. But then, a couple of years after that, the wall came down, sure enough. Came back to Cincinnati after serving my final stint in the Army in the Pentagon. I was in the Secretary of Defense's office, the General Counsel's office, and have been practicing law in Cincinnati in private law firms since 1988. First with a firm called Lindhorst and Drydom, then with Buckley King, and currently now with Wooden Lamping, where I try to keep Hank Manager out of trouble in the interest of full disclosure. He's my law partner at Wooden Lamping. I'm the head of litigation department. I'm running for the Court of Appeals, and if anybody wants to know a little bit about the Court of Appeals, it handles every criminal case and every civil case that is appealed in the county, in Hamilton County. So, every case that is appealed comes up to the Court of Appeals for a determination of whether the trial court, the judge, the jury got things right. I think I've got a wealth of experience. I've, again, been a prosecutor for the Army. I was also appointed and served by the Hamilton County Commissioner, served on the Hamilton County Public Defender Commission, where we oversaw the Hamilton County Public Defender. So, I've got experience from both sides of the criminal angle. And then, as civil lawyer, I've been involved in cases representing plaintiffs and defendants in a variety of matters. My forte is business litigation, but I'll also handle personal injury cases. I've sued doctors, not too often. I've defended doctors. I've sued lawyers, again, not too often, but I've defended lawyers in malpractice. And so, I'm sort of an equal opportunity lawyer, I think. But the point of that is, I think I've got a wealth of experience on both sides of the aisle and am well-prepared to serve this community in the Hamilton County Court of Appeals. So, just appreciate the time and thank you very much, and I'll be around for a little while to, you know, talk with the citizens and answer any questions you might have. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda, we have Michelle Brown, who would like to address council concerning some issues with sewers on West Road.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm a resident of the West Road sewer mess. And on February, Sunday, February 23rd, coming home from church that morning, I noticed a, what was, looked to be a sinkhole across the street. And later in the day, I noticed city employees were there putting up boards and barriers for caution around the sinkhole. And also, there was like a truck down the street that appeared to be working on the city sewer lines. At approximately 5:00 PM, my children and I were downstairs going through summer clothes, getting out suitcases, preparing for our upcoming spring break vacation, when I noticed black water in my foyer of the basement. As I walked into the living room, I realized it had come into my entire living room, and it was coming up from my laundry room drain. My 12-year-old daughter ran down the street to the city employees to let them know that we had water coming up through our drains, and I don't know this person's name, but a city employee came up, apologized for what had happened, said that they were trying to fix it. The city sewer line had collapsed, and, you know, he apologized. He assured me that the city would take care of everything, and that he would get a drain, or a plug, to put in the drain to stop it from going, to continue to come up through our drain in the laundry room. We did our best to try to get all of our items out as fast as we can, but the water was coming up so quickly that we weren't able to. So, in the meantime, there's plenty of city employees out there realizing what has happened. They're checking with other residents to see what's going on. One of the residents across the street had come over and said that it happened about 2:00 in the morning at their house, and the water had come up in their basement. At this point, there's about four inches of water in my entire basement, which is my foyer, storage area, living room, laundry room, and bathroom. The gentleman put in the plug in the drain, and then he left and just, you know, he did come back the next day to check on us. We contacted Brock Restoration to take care of, to come out to try to clean up the damages, and then also contacted our own personal insurance company. Also, later that night, I was looking through Facebook, as Jeff has stated, as to what happened, and a city employee from Harrison posted on there that he apologized at the, about the sewer collapse. If you are affected, the City of Harrison will take care of it, not to worry. Best of luck. I'm so sorry this happened to you. It will be taken care of. February 26th, the next day, we continued to clean it up. We contacted Jim Leslie, and he claimed that we needed to turn it into our personal insurance company, and that the city will turn a claim into their insurance. On February 22nd, Brock Restoration came out. They tore up my entire basement, meaning the floors, the walls, everything, all of our personal belongings he threw out in a pile for their dump truck to come and pick up. On March 1st, our personal insurance adjuster came out and basically took one look and was like, "You have $5,000 worth of coverage. We're just writing you a check. The damage is far exceeds what your limit is." On March 2nd, contacted Jim Leslie again, because we haven't heard from the city or the city insurance company, and just questioning their intent to pay. He claimed that he turned it to the city's insurance, which is Highland Insurance, and hasn't heard from them. On March 6th, contacted Jim Leslie again, which is a week and a half later after the incident occurred. He claims he still hasn't heard from the city's insurance. I then asked for a contact name of the company, and that I advised I will call them myself. Being in the insurance business for multiple years, at this point, we should have already heard from somebody from the city. When we contacted Highland Insurance, we spoke with a man named Mark Remake. He noted he didn't see any kind of claims on the file, and then transferred us to the claims department. There, we spoke with Mike, and he advised that no claim has even been filed. On March 14th, contacted Jim Leslie again. He said that our insurance has to pay, and that the city will only pay our $1,000 deductible. On March 20th, which is three and a half weeks after the sewer line collapsed, Jim Leslie talked to my mom and stated that he's working with the city to be sure that all homeowners that were affected would take care of, would be taken care of. We went to the council, the committee, the street committee meeting, in which there was Jim Leslie, the mayor, Ethan Dole, Mike Maynes, Ryan Grubbs. And at that point, Jim Leslie advised everybody on council that the insurance denied the claim. We are unsure as to why they denied the claim, and not exactly sure what the insurance that the city is paying for, it will actually cover. The mayor suggested at that time to maybe move numbers around to see what the city could do to take care of all the homeowners that were affected. That time, I addressed concerns of uncertainty and disappointment and how this is being handled, especially since the collapse of the city sewer line is caused because of deterioration and lack of maintenance and upkeep due to the city. The city was well aware of the deterioration, because approximately three years prior, the same thing happened. Yet again, another sinkhole, and the sewer line collapsed. That portion that was collapsed at that time was fixed and repaired, but knowing that there was still damage to the pipelines, they did not repair that. On March 22nd, Jim Leslie offered us $3,000 plus our $1,000 deductible. When we questioned where that figure came from, he said he felt it was fair for all the residents and that were affected by the damage. On April 3rd, my parents attended another street council meeting with all the estimates. We have an estimate from Brock, the contractors, and the damage to our personal property. And council advised they would get back with us. And I just want to make note, at this point, nobody from the city or city's insurance has come out to assess any damages, to look at our house, to see anything. And I have copies of all the damages, which total over $13,000.
I'm sorry, so there's been no update on the original $4,000? You didn't speak of the most recent offer?
The most recent, you offered an additional $2,000.
Correct. So, that's $6,000 altogether?
That's $6,000.
On top of the $5,000 from your insurance?
From our insurance, and our total is a $13,000.
Is that depreciated value, or is that replacement value?
That would be what it would cost to replace what we have.
To include the property?
Correct. So, on April 9th, we spoke with Jim Leslie. He offered an additional $2,000, meaning a total of $6,000, which is a total amount that the city will pay. Our damage is $13,755. Our insurance paid $5,000, leaving a difference of $8,755. Today, I'm asking the city to pay $8,755. I feel this is a fair and reasonable request on our behalf. The collapse of the main sewer line happened across the street. It was not a portion of my property. It was not my sewer lateral. The city should be accountable for maintaining the service that we pay for as taxpayers. I expect that the service that I pay for will be maintained and upkept. If these services are not maintained and upkept, then the city should be responsible for the damages caused due to lack of maintenance on their part. Today, it's seven and a half weeks later. I'm asking the city to do what is right, to pay the $8,755 to take care of the cleanup, the restoration, the construction, and the contents that were all damaged by the collapse of the sewer line.
Just for clarification, did you say the damage was $13,500?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, seven, fifty, five, oh, eight, is what everything adds up to.
Okay, and then I hear you say that you got five from your insurance company?
Five from our insurance.
And that the city's offered six?
Right.
All right, so there's a three, $2,500, $3,000?
Twenty, seven, thirty-five.
Do we know why our insurance company didn't pay?
It's not, the insurance policy is not written to cover failure of a line.
So, it would be like under act of God, or what? I'm not understanding.
Yes.
Okay.
So, for council's reference, the first, so the sturgills have been to council, or wastewater committee meetings. The first meeting, once the whole problem happened, the first thing we did was authorize an emergency repair and replacement project to get everything taken care of, stabilize, camera the existing lines, and keep us from happening again. Then, that is when Jim initially went to the insurance company with our claim. Came back, no good. So, then we started to go through this. The second committee meeting happened, and that's where the $6,000 offer, you know, we got the estimates at the second committee meeting, went through, you know, the 87.55 is a full value for the belongings and everything. The $6,000 offer, we thought was more of a depreciated value on the belongings. So, I guess what we really need to do is kind of, you know, hear everybody's thoughts on this. I mean, there wouldn't be any loss here if this hadn't happened. Is it our fault? We absolutely would never intend to do this to anybody. And, you know, I've spoke with you guys. You all know where I'm at with it. The city would never want to put anybody in this spot. These things happen. Most people are lucky, you know, they've got a good enough insurance that it'll cover most of this, and where the $3,000 or the $1,000 deductible from the city will take care of the problem. This isn't the instance here. So, you know, these guys are out. You know, I don't think that we're worlds apart on our $6,000 offer to the 87.55. And, you know, does anybody, you know, what are your thoughts? Do you have objections to, you know, can we hit the 8,700 number? Has anybody got any heartburn? You know, do you have any ideas of any other ways to go about this? I don't think we're going to get any money from our insurance company, is what I'm getting at, to settle this.
Was there any, I guess, defective work done by the prior contractor that contributed?
No, I think it's important to point out, when that work was done on the lower part of West Road, that line was checked, and there wasn't a need to replace the line going clear up the hill. At this point right now, what we've done is not only replaced the collapsed line, but we've scoped clear up to where the last sink was up on top, where the last problems occurred. So, we've pretty much gone clear up on top of the hill to ensure that there are no other areas of concern. At this point, we're replacing as much as we possibly can. We've authorized the work to be done, why they have the holes in the ground. But she had stated that it was scoped and decided not to work, and that that part's just not true. The line did not need repaired at that time.
But you were well aware that it was deteriorating at that time.
Well, we were given advice, so we rely on professionals that evaluate the lines. And they told us that the line was not expected to be in a position to need repairs for at least five years. It's been three. So, we weren't negligent. We have money in hand that we were planning on doing addressing portions of the system, many different areas in the city. But when you're told by a professional that there's at least five years till you're going to need to get in there and do maintenance, things change. We understand that, but we do not have the ability, and it would be very costly to go every year and check everything. There's probably 35, 40 miles of sewer line in the city, and we don't camera 100% of that every year, or even in a regular five-year rotation. We're looking at changing that policy, but that's expensive. We have to see how it works in the budget. But when this happened three years ago, we did. We videoed from down at West Road all the way up to approximately, not quite to Harrison Avenue, and evaluated the line, had a professional look at it. We replaced the sections that needed immediate attention. We knew what other sections would be needing attention in approximately five or so years. It failed before they said it was going to fail. We are doing that same process today, evaluating the entire length of that line, and having a professional tell us what the proper corrective actions are. There's multiple. Do nothing is one option, if it's in good enough condition. Put a liner in if it's in deteriorated but not bad condition. Or, take the line out, which is what happened in that area immediately near your house, and put a brand-new line in. And we're getting the information from the contractor. It takes time to camera that. And the truck that you initially saw was trying to, what we anticipated was a blockage, to clear that out. It was a jetter truck. So, the first equipment, normally when you have a break or a backup, is to try to jet the line out to allow the flow to come through. So, the response was proper. What we've been doing for the last three years is maintaining a balance so that we can address that pipe when we were getting, when we would have come up to the five-year timeframe. We did not plan. We had no intention or anything for that line to be in a condition where it failed. We, if we had known that it was going to fail, if you could tell me that the line in front of one of these other residents' houses is going to fail tomorrow, we'd be out there today trying to prevent it, but we don't have that knowledge. We have to go with the information provided by a professional agency that told us it's going to be at least five years, so you need to give that line attention. So, as far as negligent or not maintaining it, we were following the best advice we had.
I don't think these estimates are unreasonable. I mean, everything here that this reconstruction guy did is just your normal stuff, flooring and plumbing and cabinets and millwork and trim. And obviously, Brock has to disinfect, because, I mean, it was raw sewage.
Right.
So, I don't know. I think it just boils down, really, to do what's right, you know?
So, here's, first of all, I empathize with what you're going through. I just went through a basement flooding back in December. Came through, they had to do the same thing. Pull out all the floor. They had, we had Safe Pro come in and do all of the water extraction. They cut all the drywall out. They did all that. I understand what you're going through. We just went through it, and then a month later, it happened again. Had to go through it again, twice in three months. Once was because of faulty equipment. Once was power outage, which we talked about last week. But what I will tell you is, I had insurance. My insurance covered some. They didn't cover everything. There was, I took losses on it as well. And the only, the only area that I would have discussion, this, what Brock's done and what we're seeing here, no problem with. The only, the only thing I would look at is the replacement value versus depreciated value on personal goods. When I'm looking at $180 for boots, how old were the boots? You know, how much use were on them? Different things like that. I don't want to nickel and dime it, but when I see $3,900 for personal effects, that there is no depreciation on. I mean, unfortunately, sometimes there's going to be some areas that we're going to lose out on a little bit. So, what is fair? What is, where can we meet in the middle? And I think that's where we came up with the $11,000, because you have the $5,000 from the insurance plus the $6,000, and that's equivalent to 80% of the total cost of the expenses taking place. That's more than what the insurance would actually pay out if you took into account depreciation. And where I was getting at with some of these, some of these look like they may have been heirlooms, you know, the antique bench. Did you dispose of the bench? Is that something that can be repaired?
Yeah, we pitched. I mean, everything went into a dumpster. So, and if you have a homeowner's policy, you have replacement cost coverage. So, it's what you have to replace it at today's value.
They also put caps on it. That's what they did with us.
Sure. This is not unreasonable. And I, like, I did not even, there was so much stuff I did not even put on here, that we just pitched. We did so much cleaning up ourself. We didn't put that on there. What about my doors? Like, I had no wall for my garage, the inside, therefore, my heating bill has increased. You know, there are so many things that we did not even add on to here, and I feel like just me. And I feel like just me giving this, like, this is what is, to me, is fair. You know, I'm not asking, we're not asking for tons of money, not asking you to replace the stuff that I just pitched because I don't care that it's not replaced. But I feel that this is reasonable. And, you know, like I said, I understand that there's a cap on things. But a couch, I put on there $1,000. To go out and buy a sectional recliner, like, sectional do reclining couch, you're not gonna buy that for $1,000. Like, I was very generous in my figures that I put on there.
And how did you come up with your figures?
My figures, I Googled it, you know, and like with the couch, you know, it's seven years old. So we paid $3,500 for it. $1,000 is fair to go out. I'm not gonna be able to go out today and buy that same couch for $1,000.
And I understand that, and you also had seven years of use on it. I'm not disputing that at all, but I'm just saying.
But you also had to take in the condition of stuff too, so that is not...
And do you have photos and?
I have photos of everything that was done, you know, yet nobody's asked for them, nobody's came to see the pile of garbage.
This is the first time I'm hearing of it.
I understand that.
Hey, Michelle, out of this, what, you know, where is your bottom-line number? Or is this it?
I feel that's my bottom line. I mean, we've come to multiple meetings, we've contacted multiple times. Like, we're trying to get people to work with us, people don't call us back. He don't, you know, it's just, it's very frustrating, you know? And I'm like, at this point, like, I feel it's fair. You know, and this isn't even gonna cover what it's gonna cost to actually come in and fix it all. This isn't even it. You know, it's gonna be way more than that. And because we had paneling, so we're gonna have to tear all the paneling down because you can't match the paneling back up. So this number is, doesn't even come close to what it's actually gonna cost to actually fix it all to make it livable again.
So what exactly would be the process here? We've gone through committee, we've come up with two offers that have not been accepted. Have we had a situation like this before, Mayor? Before my tenure here?
Not since I've been involved in city government. We've not had an issue like this. But the process would be, so to date, the committee has made authorizations to the utility director. I made the initial $1,000, which I made that the day that I heard that there was a break. I said, we'll cover any deductibles up to $1,000 that any of the homeowners have. Because typically, homeowner's insurance, you have a $500 or a $1,000 deductible. Very rarely do you see it above that. The committee has the authority to authorize the director to expend funds. I do not. Council has the authority to authorize funds to be spent. The mayor does not. The mayor, the council controls the budget and the expenditure. So if, at this point, since, unless the committee wants to reconsider, council could make an authorization or not, it would be their...
Well, I think it's in council's lap at this point. They're here, I'd like to kinda hear what everybody thinks, you know?
What I would ask first of all, guys, is this whole thing in terms of the city's liability? I mean, what I'm hearing is there's no negligence. Is that fair?
Well, I mean, we need to talk with our city employees.
That's my point. I think we need to have a discussion with Mr. Dieters before the city is authorizing the expenditure of any monies. We've got, A, whether or not there was negligence. If there was no negligence, that's one issue. Secondly, there's a concept called sovereign immunity. You've got proprietary functions, governmental functions. I'm not sure where this falls. But my suggestion is that we table the matter tonight until the committee's had an opportunity to discuss the matter with Mr. Dieters, so we get an idea of what kind of footing we're actually on here. And that would seem to me to be the prudent way of doing it. We've got a budget that we try to operate on within the city, and there are things that happen all the time. If we're at fault, that's one thing. If sovereign immunity doesn't apply, that's another thing. We wanna be fair to everybody in the city. But if we didn't cause the problem, and again, I don't have any inside information on what exactly happened, but I think that should be discussed with Mr. Dieters and a full investigation of facts before we just go off and start making decisions without having the proper background.
Would this be an appropriate thing to discuss in an executive session?
Absolutely. And probably, probably not tonight, because Mr. Dieters is gonna have some research to do.
Sure.
And there's gonna be some fact gathering that should be done prior to any, you know, any further discussions on this. So I would move that we table it.
And maybe request for Mr. Dieters to prepare for an executive session at the first meeting in May?
Sure.
Okay. And after that executive session, we should have an answer for you. All right? Thank you.
We got a motion to table on the floor?
I don't think we need a motion, because there's not a official...
All right, we're good.
So the action items are that Bill Dieters is gonna be collecting facts, and we will expect to have an executive session after the May meeting, May 1st.
Five-one.
And to discuss this and come to a conclusion, hopefully after that session.
Okay.
The next item is approval of an ordinance for the increase of directors and chief salaries. This item was actually addressed about June of last year, and there was a hang-up with one of the salaries. So it's been lingering. This has all but been approved. It's been discussed many times. And I apologize to the law director, his is the outstanding salary. We will have to address, his salary is not changing in this ordinance, but it will be addressed in the upcoming, in a couple months, adjustment. So we do have this. It's been just lingering, it's not something brand-new. And it actually has been taking effect. But we need to get this so that during our audit, that our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed.
I was gonna say, this won't, they've already been getting paid these amounts. So it's not gonna affect anything from the monetary side. It's just actual...
Yeah.
Yes.
It's just putting the proper paperwork in place.
I'll make a motion, second then.
So we have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion on this item? Please take the roll.
Galindo.
Yay.
Abrams.
Yay.
Manager.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Lewis.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Mainz.
Yay.
Next item is approval of a resolution to declare a moratorium on the granting of building permits, change of use, changes of occupancy, or certificates of occupancy for any building or structure in the city of Harrison Downtown Redevelopment District. And this is only for that specific district. The moratorium is written for, I believe, 180 days, six months. We have every intention of completing the work in 90 days, give or take a couple days there, so that we can lift the moratorium at that time. But if we would miss one of the publications, that could extend the period. So we put six months in, six months in as a conservative estimate. We have every intention of working on this as quickly and as diligently as we can to get it completed in approximately 90 days.
Motion to approve.
Second. Do we have any questions about this? It's so that we can get design standards in place.
And do we have confidence that it'll get done in 90 days? So that six months is ample time?
The six months is in case there's a problem with publishing of a notice or a meeting conflict where it goes beyond the 90. I don't anticipate getting anywhere near six months.
Hope not.
Any other questions or comments?
This is consistent with what we're trying to do with the comprehensive plan, so it's a no-brainer.
Yep. Please take the roll.
Abrams.
Yay.
Manager.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Lewis.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Mainz.
Yay.
Galindo.
Yay.
It's resolution five.
Brings us down to the reports. I have a proclamation to read for my report this evening. So proclamation honoring April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community. And now therefore, I, William Nyer, Mayor of City of Harrison, do hereby recognize and honor the date, April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day. And as a side note, this Friday, the city is gonna be recognized for the third year as being a Tree City USA. My, Mainz, myself, and several members of the Tree Board will be attending to receive that award. Do we have a report from the law director this evening?
Actually, I should have a very brief report.
Could you grab a microphone somewhere?
Your table.
Yeah, just real briefly, when I did the moratorium, it reminded me that we still needed to extend the moratorium on the medical marijuana sales. So that will be at, hopefully on the agenda for next council. We have law meeting prior to, so I'll bring it, I'll send a copy to the law committee, and I'll have it available for the agenda next meeting. Because our original one was six months, but it's expired.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Abrams, do you have a report this evening?
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you to FCN Bank, of course, for the generous donation to our Recreation Commission. We will put it to good use, of course, as we kick off our summer concert series. And thank you, Michelle Brown and Faye for coming here and informing us rather detailed on everything that's happened, and we hope to have an answer for you. May 1st is our next meeting, I think, May 1st? All right. Recreation, a couple reminders. Summer fund sign-ups are coming up, April 21st from 10:00 a.m. to noon here at the Community Center, and April 24th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here at the Community Center. It's $20, which includes a really cool new, newly-designed T-shirt. Concert series starts on June 12th with the menus, right out back here. And our next recreation meeting is May 9th at 7:00 p.m. The district food truck rally is Saturday, May 19th from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. Enjoy live music, gourmet food trucks, and of course, shopping local. I followed up with Duke, and the answer is that they, they gave us some different stats and answers and whatnot, everybody has that in their email box. And I sent it to Shannon Hammonds and Joette. We'll make sure we put it on our Facebook page, and then we'll make sure Joette gets it on our city website for everybody to see. And there were a couple of residents that were here that I've already sent the emails to, that I had their email, so pass it on to anybody that you know that was here. And economic development, on April 4th, we had a workforce development roundtable discussion. It was an outstanding meeting, and of course, we're all looking forward to everyone working together to enhance workforce development. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do, Mayor, thank you. I also wanna thank Andy Corbs, Andy Cobs, for being here and presenting the check again. So many of our community businesses are so generous with us, and we couldn't do some of the things we do in the city without the generosity of these businesses. Ms. Brown, thank you for coming out here tonight. I don't know what the end result of this will be, but I wanna compliment you on the professional and articulate way in which you presented your position to us. I think you've got, you've got a good audience here, and we heard what you had to say. We're concerned about it, but we wanna make sure we're doing this in a proper way. My partner, Dale Stoff, I wanna extend my thanks to him for blessing us tonight with his presence. He's a wonderful partner, a good friend, and it's always nice to see somebody with that talent and capability running to improve our judicial system. Fire committee met this evening. The chief presented his monthly report. We also discussed the Medicare billing report. We're on pace this year, you know, I think we were a little bit ahead last year of where we were the prior year. We're talking about the process of our people in line to potentially be hired here in terms of their testing for their different skill sets. We also, you know, are doing some reviewing of our code to bring our fire code up to date with the state fire codes that have had some recent changes. Mr. Dieters is gonna be drafting an ordinance that we'll probably also be looking at next month to adopt some proposed changes. The chief also made a presentation relative to protective armor for our first responders. We're looking into that. Obviously, these people put themselves in harm's way more than any of us like to think. And, you know, it used to be that, you know, firefighters had to worry about fighting fires. Now, they respond to different emergencies, and they not only have to worry about fighting fires, they have to worry about getting shot, you know, or assaulted. So we're committed to taking care of our first responders every way we can. So that's, that's gonna be looked at, and probably some action will be taken on that in the near future. I wanna bring everybody up to speed on some of the things going on with the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Regional Council governments, particularly Thursday, April 26th. They're gonna be holding the Second Annual Smart City Summit, which deals with the Internet of Transportation, smart mobility, and infrastructure. Members, colleagues on council, and Shannon, if one of you guys is able to attend that meeting, it starts at 9:00 a.m. at Union Hall down and over the Rhine. It's gonna be a great program. I'm not able to attend that meeting because I'm in court all day that day. But Lori Platt with OKI can get you set up. You know, as the council's representative, I get a free ticket, which I can't use, but it's worthwhile, and I would like somebody to be able to use that. So get ahold of me and let me know, and I'll get you in touch with Lori. We've got a meeting of the Inner Cable Commission next Thursday night, the 26th. That I can make because I'll be out of court. So I'll be attending that, and I will bring you up to speed on any new and exciting things going on with ICRC and cable. Last but not least, tonight, we had a public hearing on the new comprehensive plan. Here's like not the final draft, but it's very close to being the final draft. This is a beautiful piece of work that the city's been working on for the last year. And Emily Crowe with McBride Dale was here, made a great presentation. And I'm gonna be the first one up here to admit, when this process started, I'm looking for like an eight-and-a-half-by-11-inch thing I could stick in a binder. And I was personally committed to making sure we reviewed that properly. When the concept of how this was gonna look was first presented to me, I was a little bit skeptical, because I like my eight-and-a-half-by-11 sheets that I can put in the binder. And, you know, I'm slowly coming around to what younger people are seeing with technology. But this product that was put out... people are seeing with technology, but this product that was put out is unbelievably good. And you can see large versions of it around the room today. If anybody out there hasn't seen this yet, please get a copy. And, you know, one of my objections initially would have been, well, look how big this thing is. I can't drag this around in my briefcase, my pocket.
You're going to.
Well, no, actually not, because as it was pointed out tonight, there's going to be a copy of this baby in everybody's drawer. So, we're all going to get two copies of it here. So, one copy you'll have at home so that each of us can be perusing that at night, you know, instead of some of the other things we do. And secondly, when something comes before us that deals with the future of this community by way of development, what have you, we can all open our drawer and pull this baby out, put it down next to us, open it up, and see if that proposal squares with the work we've put in to try to map out the future of this community. So, I want to acknowledge the work of all the people that participated in this. When we have the final vote on it, you know, we'll probably recognize each individual member of the steering committee and our city directors and everybody else that's put in a lot of time on it. I'm also going to tell you that, as you look at this plan, there's a place in here that talks about initiatives and efforts and plans and studies. Our directors in this community are already off and running with some of these things. You've got the downtown districts going on. I've got Mike Mainz talking tonight before the meeting about bike trails. We've gotten emails on that. People are off and running on some of the proposals in this plan, and it's a beautiful thing. The key is going to be, after those initial efforts take place, is in coming years that we make a point of having an annual retreat or what have you, where members of council, our directors, concerned citizens, all come in and weigh in on prioritizing the things in this plan. All this isn't going to happen overnight, but if we prioritize it and we stay after it year in and year out, most of this stuff is going to get done, and it's really going to benefit our community. And I also want to thank the representatives we had, you know, from Crosby Township, Harrison Township, OKI, the Park District, the School District, everybody that's been involved, and the Hamilton County Engineers Office. It's really been a work of a lot of people. So, thank you to everybody that's worked on this. You know, there's still some time. If you've got some ideas, you pick it up, look at it. It's not too late to tweak it a little bit and try to get it in final form. Shannon?
Also, if someone wants to see it online, you go to envisionharrison.org, and it'll be there as it is right now, like it's on their computer, and they can also send us comments back.
InvisionHarrison.org, if you didn't get that. Thanks, Shannon. That's all I have, Mayor.
You know, Hank, I said you've been, this has been a focus of yours for probably two and a half years now. Do we, do we think there's going to be more changes to this, or do you want to have this added to our next agenda to approve it?
I think the concept is to have it on the next agenda, and if people get ahold of us, you know, in enough time, and again, I don't think there's more than a couple of tweaks to it. I've seen a few typos that have to be corrected. I don't have any issue at all with the substance.
It's your baby. You asked for it to be put on the agenda.
Well, we're going to ask for it to be put on the agenda.
There you go.
So, you know, I am very excited about it and like to get it done, and then the quick follow-up will be the downtown, you know, Entertainment District.
Thank you, Hank.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Grubbs, do you have a report this evening?
Yeah, I have a couple items to cover. First, Ms. Brown, eventually we'll be able to have a meeting where we won't be talking about sewage, hopefully, and I look forward to that day. But hopefully, we'll be able to get this thing wrapped up right quick for you, and I do thank you and your folks for stopping out this evening. On the, on the master plan, you know, there has been a lot of work put into it, and I think the big thing to point out is the, the community aspect of it. This is the Harrison Community Plan. This is not council's plan. I think providing feedback and input in regards to it, even after it is voted on and put into force, I think it's incredibly important. So, even if after the vote takes place, if there's people that have input or would like to sit down and talk about it, please, I encourage everyone to continue to work with us on this going forward. We do. We want to work forward and do what's best for the overall community. So, please reach out to any of us, and we can get it directed in the right way, but it is our, as a Harrison Community Plan. It is all of ours. So, I do want to take a quick moment and recognize Mary Kate. You know, she's worked with the city for some time, and she's getting married here soon and then moving on to Indianapolis, so we'll have a different representative from the Harrison press. But I do want to wish her well and congratulate her in her new ventures. FCN, Andy, absolutely incredible. Three years in a row that he has supported, and there's a lot of stuff that we wouldn't be able to do without that donation. So, I want to thank FCN and Andy for the support that they continue to provide to our community. Last, we did have finance committee this evening. We do have, of course, our expenditures, which I would have preferred to probably see the revenues, but it is tax time, so we don't have a lot of the revenues flowing in at this point. Expenditures are a little bit high, but we do have a lot of contracts that are being paid out at the beginning of the year, so it's kind of expected. But I think we're looking okay as of right now, and I look forward to seeing our revenues coming in. So, other than that, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Dole, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. Police committee met this evening. We received our monthly traffic crash analysis report from the chief. There were 37 accidents in March. 28 of those were on public roadways, and nine of those were on private property. As most of you know, we've been working through trying to replace one officer. We had one opening that we had a civil service test for a little while back, and that process is moving forward. There's one individual at this point that's been, is going to be receiving an offer of employment. So, once, once that happens and he accepts and everything's moving forward, we can announce his name and so forth. But for now, we just have to leave it at that. Also, this month, as of this month, all of our new officers have graduated from FTO program and are progressing well. So, the FTO program is their Training Officer Program. So, they were new officers, and they get put with a Training Officer for a period of time until they're cleared for duty on their own. So, they're all out there on their own now. National Police Week is coming up. May 13th through May 19th is National Police Week, and May 15th is, in particular, is National Peace Officer Memorial Day. All flags will be flying at half-staff that day. Also, on May the 10th at 11:00 a.m. will be the Local Police Memorial Ceremony and Parade Event, starting at Fountain Square in downtown. That's attended by a huge number of the police departments and police personnel from around the area.
It actually kicks off this year at Sixth and Central at the Fire Memorial because they had an issue with Fountain Square, so.
Okay.
Sorry.
There you have the correction.
That was fresh off the press today.
All right.
Sorry.
It didn't make my press.
It didn't make your press, yeah. Sorry. My press. Sorry.
The, the next meeting of the Police Committee will be May the 15th at 6:00 p.m., and that's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dole, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. At our last Planning Commission meeting, we had a hearing for the comprehensive plan that we had a hearing for tonight. Basically, the contents of that meeting were to approve the recommendation of the master plan to come on up to council then. And I just want to say a big hats off to Hank and to the Steering Committee, Shannon, Joette, and Emily. Really user-friendly from what I was expecting from a master plan, so I echo your sentiments, Hank.
Well, the other one put us to sleep. Remember? It was like, yeah, it was terrible. I couldn't get through it.
Absolutely. I don't know that anybody had ever read the whole thing, probably.
Yeah. You probably didn't make it.
Yeah, right. Next meeting of the Planning Commission will be May the 8th at 7:30 p.m. The next meeting of the Streets, Utilities, Sewer and Storm Marta Committees will be held on our first meeting in May, May 1st at 6:00 p.m., and that'll also be the meeting. Cindy, if you want to take notes, it will be requesting an executive session at Snacks or something.
All right.
It would be great, probably.
Well, you know.
[laughing]
Those are all capable men.
Michelle.
I'm actually waiting. I need to bring something.
You're the best at it.
Oh, right. That's true.
Thank you for coming out tonight and just kind of getting it out in front of everybody. Hopefully, this will be over. Let's, we'll get our executive session, let everybody weigh in on it, kick it around, the whole group, and hopefully, we can get this figured out. So, that's all I've got this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mainz, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I do. Thank you. I want to thank Eric for coming out and giving the invocation tonight. We always enjoy our local pastors coming out and getting us started off right. Andy Copes for the, his, and FCN Bank for their generous donation to our concert series and fireworks. Certainly looking forward to some warm weather and getting rid of this snow. And, Michelle, I do want to, I just can't imagine what you're going through. So, you know, this is, I know this, it's not fun, and it's dragging out. But I appreciate your patience and your professionalism in coming out tonight, presenting your case. And Kathy and Larry for coming out tonight, working through it. This is not easy, I know. I want to thank Dale for coming out, Dale Stoff for coming out, and wish him well in his primary and election run here for Hamilton County Court of Appeals. The mayor mentioned that we'll be attending Tree City USA Awards Program on Friday. Looking forward to hanging out with the Tree Board and being a part of that. Rather than having a Tree Board meeting on Tuesday, April 24th, on Monday, the 23rd, we are going to be providing some sort of free tree, 200 seedlings at the Arbor Day Giveaway at the Harrison Public Library that starts at 7:00 p.m. The plan was to give away black gum seedlings, but they got lost in some flooding that we've had here recently. So, we're looking at a white oak, a swamp white oak seedling possibly is the giveaway. We will have trees to give away, though, on April 23rd, and again, that'll be at the Harrison Public Library. Jim Circe will be our guest speaker for the event, and this will be in lieu of the April, Tuesday, April Tree Board Meeting. Thank you, Mayor, for your proclamation about Arbor Day, and again, come out, get that tree, and plant it for Arbor Day. Our Harrison Township cleanup will be April the 28th. They've been posting out on Facebook, the township has. You can contact the Township trustee, you can contact myself. We'll get the information out to you if you have any questions. But that will run Saturday, April the 28th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's for the residents of Harrison Township, which also includes parts of us that live in the city of Harrison. This is, the cleanup will be at the end of Industrial Drive off of Campbell Road. There'll be their folks to help you unload. You can get rid of up to four tires. Sorry, tire stores, you can't bring your tires, electronics, garbage, yard waste, mattresses. The mattresses have to be wrapped, car batteries, appliances, lumber, scrap metal. Document shredding will be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. No paint, no propane tanks, no oil, no explosives. Again, if you have questions, contact myself or Township trustee. Oh, I had something else here, too. I'm going to have to skip it if I can't find it here real quick. Mayor, that's all I have. I can't find my really nice little.
I'll give you a second. The swamp white oak is kind of an ironic name because all the black gums were destroyed during the recent flooding at the nursery we were purchasing them from. But that tree is actually very drought resistant, as well as very flood tolerant. So, it'd be an excellent tree to plant, and it would definitely beautify your yard. So, I encourage everybody to attend the presentation and pick up your free tree afterwards.
It's a gorgeous tree.
Yes.
It is.
Drought resistant and disease resistant.
It's also flood resistant.
And flood resistant. Very good. I found what I wanted to share. City of Harrison, we've recycled 748 tons of material in 2017. Those efforts conserve enough energy to power every home in the city of Harrison for two weeks. It reduces air pollution as if every household in the city of Harrison rode their bicycles to work for two months, and that's a long ride to work for me. And, unless I'm working from home. And then, it saves, I don't get to work from home as often as I like. And that recycling effort also saves 6,553 trees from being harvested. So, congratulations, Harrison, on recycling. If you don't have a recycling bin, come down here to the Community Center. They'll take care of you. I know I lost mine a few years ago, and they took care of that. Put your recyclables out. It helps quite a bit. If you have any more interest in that, you can visit www.hamiltoncountyrecycles.org to find out more about recycling. Hamilton County Recycles is also on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. That's all I have, Mayor.
And you know what?
Just a, oh, sorry. Just a note on the recycling. People that are new to the city, if you lived in a township or in that area, you were paying for recycling. Recycling is free for all city residents, so it does not cost you anymore, and it actually is beneficial because the city receives an incentive for the diversion of the recycled goods from the landfill. So, it's very beneficial if you were to recycle.
I was going to say, it's free, but not only if you want the small red recycle bin, that's fine, or you can call Rumpke, and they will deliver you the large green one on wheels for free. And I'm happy to fill that thing every week, so.
Thank you, Cindy, for your effort.
Welcome.
Mr. Galindo, do you have a report this evening?
Just a brief one, but before we get going, Michelle, one thing I want to do is apologize that you felt like you didn't have the responsiveness that you deserved. And I'll tell you, everybody in this room and those who are watching, if you feel like you're not getting the level of response, interaction that you deserve, please reach out to each, any one of us council members. If you go to our website, there is a link there for our emails and for our phones, our phone numbers. I gave you my card. Please reach out. We will get you an answer, as Hank said earlier. You know, at what level, will, is yet to be determined. But I apologize that you felt like you had no voice, or that you weren't being heard as you deserved, and apologize for that. But thank you for coming out, for your understanding, your patience. We're one community. We're in this together. And thank you. The only thing that I want to bring up, Mr. Mayor, is we do have a couple quotes that we are working on with the lands and building we're for. We know that coming up, either this year or next year, we have to start looking at the tenants' courts and refurbishments, getting some quotes for that. There is another small project that we're looking at with a, an addition of a fence with the pet area, but right now, we're looking to raise money with private funds and to be donated to the city. Jim is working with some quotes on that, and we'll see what we have to do. We've had some citizens reach out to say, you know, not only was it important to them, but they're willing to be a partner of the city and not just look for us to fund that, but how do we raise funds to be able to accomplish some of those goals? So, that is one thing that is going out. The Civil Defense did not meet today because of the different scheduling and committee meetings that we were in. We will reconvene next month. Other than that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Do we have any other business this evening? Shannon?
I just wanted to take a moment. I'm kind of a history geek, and I just want to let everybody know that the Harrison Historical Society is having its Fourth Annual Wine and Cheese Event this Saturday from 3:00 to 7:00 at the museum downtown. And if you haven't been there, it's a pretty amazing place with a lot of really interesting things in there. It's $10 per person, and you can pay at the door if you'd like to come for that. So, that's all.
Michelle, you do have the attention of the council now. So, your voice is heard.
Any other business this evening? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. Please take the roll.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Lewis.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Mainz.
Yay.
Galindo.
Yay.
Abrams.
Yay.
Manager.
Hey.